...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the November 29th County Commission Meeting. I would remind you to silence your cellphones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter in the white folder. And Robert is in the front and he can help you with listening devices if you need that. That will move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Doctor.
A motion is second. Any additions? All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the commission meeting minutes from November 22nd, 2016.
So move.
Is there a second? Dick, I think you get to second it since it was just us here. The meeting minutes.
Oh, second, alright.
And a motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is bills to be paid in the amount of $4,883,367.73. Is there any con-
Pay the bills.
Motion. Second. Comments on the bills?
Couple of comments, and I did ask the Auditor's Office if they might comment slightly.
Good morning Commissioners. Kim Adamson from the Auditor's Office. The bills today include our second, our semi-annual payment on all of our bond issues. The first payment was made in June 1. That was an interest-only payment. The payment that we're requesting approval for today is principal and interest on all of our outstanding debt.
Kim, do you have off the top of your head what the amount was that added to our bills today because of those outstanding?
The total payment that we are making is $3,870,670.45. And that does not include an interest payment of $136,455 that's coming from an escrow account that was established when we did the 2014 refunding.
Okay, thanks Kim. Any questions for Kim on that? Okay, Commissioner Barret?
There's one other bill I'd like to comment on. There's a item under emergency management for $491,733 that went to a grant thing that our emergency management people got, which went to public safety software. So that also increased the fairly large amount in our-
Take all, take all those out and it's about a normal bill. Week, week of bills.
Right.
So a motion and a second to pay the bills. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is the Minnehaha County Juvenile Detention Center report for October 2016. And item B is the Auditor's election expense report, and those are both on file at the Auditor's Office. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions. So moved. A motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number B is a motion to approve the 2017 pay matrix.
Good morning, Carrie Deaver from Human Resources. I have several items to go over with you this morning to ask your approval on. The first is the 2017 pay matrix. This hasn't yet been established. It was discussed at length during budget process. We talked about CPI, market issues, cost of labor increases, and a 2% increase was tentatively planned for and part of the budget. And today I'm asking for your formal approval of that amount.
Is there a motion on the pay metrics?
I'll make a motion to favor that.
A second.
Motion is second. Any comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
The second item is relating to our seasonal and variable hour rates. You might recall that last year about this time we passed a new policy where we look at those rates annually. And we put into place a process for evaluating our continuing part-time staff. As we looked at those ranges this year, we're not recommending adjustments to three out of the four for our base wages for the Tier One. We are recommending an increase to be consistent with the new South Dakota minimum wage and a slight adjustment to the top of 2% as well. So I'm asking for your approval on those new rates which were attached for your review.
Okay. Is there a motion for variable hourly rates and recommendation policy updates?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And then the last one.
The third and the fourth relate to a policy review that we did over the past year on our PTO and our ESL accruals. We're recommending a slight adjustment for our PTO accruals. You'll notice I attached a schedule for you. We have a couple of areas in our accruals which go up based on years of service. There's a couple of areas where they plateau. And we're recommending slight adjustments to the accrual rate at year four, five, 12, 13, 14, and 15. What it ends up being is approximately one day more each year. And it's not an additional amount increasing above it, just slightly adjusting the rate so that you're basically getting it one year sooner.
Okay. So the first, the motion that I just, that we just completed was for variable rates. This motion would be for recommendation of the policy updates for PTO and the ESL.
If I could before you pass that. And the ESL, just to clarify what we're asking for theirs, right now there's a provision in that policy that allows people to take two weeks off following the birth of the child, sort of a no questions asked time period, where they complete their waiting period of 24 hours of PTO and they can take the remaining time as extended sick leave, even if there's not an illness per se. We're recommending that we increase that to three weeks instead. What we're finding is that a lot of times there are health conditions associated with the mother who's caring for the child and the father who's caring for the mother. And we just think that would be more consistent and honestly ease some administrative burden as well.
Questions on that? Okay.
Chair, if I could ask, but they're not required to take three weeks off if they don't want to.
Absolutely not, no. It would just allow them to access their ESL for a greater period of time if they did choose to take that time off.
Sure. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And item number C is authorize the chairman to sign the 2017 agreement between Minnehaha County and Lincoln County for human resources services.
In 2013, Lincoln County and Minnehaha County began contracting for us, our office, to provide human resources support to Lincoln County. I can't believe that we're looking at our fifth year already, but we are going into the fifth year contracting services. And I'm asking for your approval on this one-year contract. As you might notice, the total rate for that annualized providing of services is $66,504. That is approximately a 13.7% increase over this year's rate. And that reflects a couple of items that increase in wages and benefits for staff, but as well as what we're finding is a trend of increasing time devoted to Lincoln County.
Okay. Questions for Carrie on that? Look for a motion?
So move.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks Carrie.
Thank you.
Item number six is applications for abatement. There are none. Item number seven is notice and request. There are none. Item number eight, did I miss one? Okay. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. There are none. Next we have opportunity for public comment. If there's something you would like to speak about that is not on the agenda today. Okay, I don't see anybody. We'll move on to regular business. Item number 10 is a briefing on Lutheran Social Services' Shelter Care and Reception Center services utilized from, for August, September, and utilization for August, September, and October. Erin Serska, good morning.
Good morning Commissioners. Erin Serska, Minnehaha County Commission. The first thing I want to point out is I misread the budget sheet I got from LSS. And in the memo, it indicated that we paid 40% of the actual operating costs while we've been operating shelter care. And it's actually, we've gotten 40% revenue of the total operating costs and we've paid 60% of the actual. If you look at, it's just in the wrong, it's on, it's in a different column on the actual budget sheet. So after that correction, just giving you guys an update, we entered into a contract in February of this year for Lutheran Social Services to provide shelter care and reception center services. Reception Center started March 1st and Shelter Care opened in May of this year. Both programs have been very successful. The utilizers and referral sources are very happy with the services. If you look at the financial aspect, we estimated the contract amount was for about $86,000 per month, and we're actually paying on average around $46,000 per month. So the revenue sources we're getting from renting out our beds is offsetting the cost significantly. And I have Sheila Weber here from Lutheran Social Services to talk a little bit more about the program.
Good morning. If you could just identify your name and address or your business for the record, please.
Okay. Good morning Commissioners. My name is Sheila Weber. I'm the Vice President of Children and Youth Services for Lutheran Social Services here in Sioux Falls. So a couple of highlights I just wanted to share. Since we started operating the reception center program on March 1st, we have had 495 intakes through our reception center. 378 of them are unduplicated clients, so some of the intakes were repeat intakes for different, for the same client. On average, youth are staying in our reception center about five hours each visit, and we have a little over two youth on average per day in our reception center. They primarily are between the ages of 14 and 16. That's our highest utilization age. 30% of the youth come in with no charges, so they're using that as a safe place to be to maybe cease engaging in a behavior that wasn't quite to the point of something that yielded charges, but it gets them out of that situation until their parents can come pick them up. The other vast majority are lower-level charges such as runaway, curfew violations, disorderly conduct, simple assault types of charges are the majority of the youth that we're seeing in our reception center. For Shelter Care, we started that service on May 2nd. And in that period of time, over the last six months through October 31st, we've had 178 youth come through our Shelter Care program and stay in our Shelter Care program. 137 of them are unique clients where they're unduplicated. Some had repeat visits as well. On average, or out of that total, 94 were Minnehaha County youth. 46 were from the Department of Corrections and Department of Social Services. And 37 were from partner counties. So on average, we have slightly over five per day from Minnehaha County in our Shelter Care program, about two and a half per day from partner counties, and over, slightly over four per day from DSS and DOC utilizing that. On average, they're staying about 10 days in Shelter Care, and we've been averaging almost 12 youth in Shelter Care every day out of the 15 we have capacity for. And in recent months, we've seen that increase. So the utilization has picked up. Just to have some additional information, in both reception and shelter, for the youth that come through one time, that's about 60% of the youth that come through, come through only one time since we've been operating. And then about 25% come through twice. So there's only a small number that come through more than two times. So when you think about, a lot of times people perceive that it's the same kids coming through or maybe having law enforcement involvement repeatedly. Actually, that's not what we've been seeing. The vast majority are only coming through one time. With that, I'll open it up for any questions if you have questions of me.
Are there questions for Sheila? Commissioner Bender?
I have a really, really basic question. So all of your, all of the reporting references, Arise Youth Center, is that just a name that you guys use internally?
Yes. Arise Youth Center is the name of the overall program that we have. And then within Arise Youth Center, we have the Reception Center Service, the Shelter Care Service, and now starting in November, the Evening Report Center Service. So, but it's all under the umbrella of Arise Youth Center is what we call that program.
Okay, but those are all programs through Minnehaha County?
Right. So they're all operated by Lutheran Social Services and all funded by Minnehaha County as detention alternatives, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have anything to report at all on the Evening Report Center? I realize it just opened. It hasn't even been a month as to how it's going.
It did just open this, this month in November, so we don't have any statistics through the end of October for that. It's going very well. I believe Melanie is our program director for that program. Six youth so far?
Eight total.
Okay. So eight total youth we've served so far, two referrals currently pending in that program. And that's just over the past two to three weeks since we've started operating. It's going really well. The youth are attending faithfully. We've not had anyone when we've come to pick them up from school not come to meet us at the pickup spot. They've been, been attending very well. We're focusing on having them learn some, some important life skills. They're using their Infinite Campus and the Chromebooks from the Sioux Falls School District. So they, we teach them to look up their grades and learn how to track that for themselves, catch up on their homework assignments. They're learning how to menu plan, make their own meals for dinner, go shopping, as well as job skills. And they've been doing community service projects. So they've done three community service projects already in the community. So overall, that feels like it's off to a very good start, and we're very pleased as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Bender?
Could you just remind probably me and everybody watching what that program is, how kids get referred to that program?
Yes. So the Evening Report Center operates six days a week, and there's four hours of programming time. But we also pick the youth up from school and transport them to the program and then transport them home at the end of the evening. And during that programming time is when they experience the things I just described. And it's a court referral process, so it would go through the court as, as part of the, as they're going through the court process in a way for them to be, avoid detention, learn how to be on the right track, avoid getting rearrested, things like that. And so that's the purpose of that program.
And the age group? What age group does that serve?
Age group, we serve age 10 through 17, but they're also more likely to be in that 15 to 17 age range.
Additional questions?
I have a question for Erin.
Erin Serska, thank you Sheila.
Erin, what, we aren't doing any new programs over what we were doing two years ago or a year ago, is it?
Right.
Okay. And since we haven't got a full year to date on a lot of this information, how are we tracking according to what, what the old program cost and the new one? And then also, were we originally anticipating about 50% coming from the counties outside in the DOC? Or what, didn't we have an original number in there that we, we thought you got total cost here and then how much is paid by the other?
Right. When we, I originally briefed you before we entered into the contract, we looked at, we wanted to do a rough estimate about how much we could expect in revenue from renting out our beds. And when we did that, we did about, because on average, we use around six as a county. So we averaged about, of the 15 beds, about 50, you know, six to eight that we could rent out. So we're on the right track. If you look at, since we've opened up Shelter Care with, and had no startup costs, so June through October, we're right at Minnehaha County spending 54% of the actual cost. So we're pretty, we're pretty close to our estimated, what we said in the beginning of the year. We're pretty much on track for that. As far as looking at the cost differ, the cost difference, that's something that we'll look at probably at a year end to see how much it actually, what the cost difference was. I would like to note that we are using the services a little bit more, Shelter Care more than we did two to three years ago, which was as expected. As our detention population goes down, the utilization of our alternatives will increase. We can put something together after we have a full year of operation to kind of look at the cost difference from what we were paying between the programs. I can tell you that for sure the Evening Report Center will stay the same cost. That is something that was actually a separate contract, and it's for the same exact cost that we were paying VOA for that service, so.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Okay. That was just a briefing, so thank you Erin, and thank you for coming, LSS people. Thank you. Move on to item number 11, which is consider an appeal of an administration decision, administrative decision by the Planning and Zoning Department to charge a $500 penalty fee for conducting drainage work without a permit on a property legally described as a southeast one quarter except tract one running addition and H dash two and accept HW in section 33, Del Rapids Township. David Heinhold, good morning David.
Good morning Commissioner. David Heinhold, Minnehaha County Planning Department. The applicant, David Wieland. This is an appeal of an administrative decision, just a second, screen pull-up, to charge the $500 penalty fee for conducting routine maintenance on a natural waterway without a drainage permit. Just a little bit of, just a little bit of reference on a map here. It shows the location. This is Baltic is about a half mile to the east, just off the edge of this screen, as you can see there on the inset map. This location is located, here's Baltic Corner, just about quarter mile north of that location. There's a culvert. This is an intermittent stream that runs into Silver Creek. This area, this that's shown in yellow is the previous Silver Creek Channel as delineated by the USGS two and a half minute topographic maps that they produce on elevation data. And this red line right here is the, the new channel, which I'll be referencing and where the work was specifically and what staff has investigated is runs, basically connects this piece. As you can see, staff received a complaint earlier this summer about August 2nd. Multiple different property or landowners in different agencies had contacted us about straightening out Silver Creek and investigating that and, and looking into what drainage permits were issued. There was a permit that was issued for drainage tile, which I'll get to a little bit later on in the presentation. But there was no permit for cleaning out a natural waterway or creating a new surface drain which requires a drainage permit under the drainage ordinance. We sent out an initial letter at this time in August as a stop work order. And in proceeding forward, going into the next couple of slides, you can see some of the dirt in the background being moved around, the excavator equipment right there. Moving forward, you have, this is the existing, the Silver Creek waterway that runs all the way into this area right here, as you can see off to the left of the image, is approximately, was where that new channel is located with the, some of the dirt piles that are located along that stream from the, the clean out that was done. Staff sent out an additional letter in October, in September, since this work was done, as a second letter to the property owner and, and received response on that as far as the work that's been done. And, and this is just one of the, the indications. This is that intermittent stream that I was showing you that extends from the highway where the sediment has been pulled back from the waterway. No permit was filed for this work that was done as of October 18th is when this picture was taken. And this just shows a more zoomed out view. As you can see in the background, the dirt piles are gone. Everything has been leveled off. The excavator equipment is, is not there anymore. And this is same thing, October 18th. So, and basically, in giving a little background information as far as what's happened since that time over the past couple of months, both Paul and David Wieland, the applicant and the property owner stopped by to pick up a drainage permit application at that time. Staff indicated, informed them that they needed to send out certified mail to the downstream property owners within a half mile, since this is a routine maintenance of a natural waterway as required by the ordinance. And Mr. Wieland indicated that he was told that when he applied for the drainage tile permit, that he was okay to clean out the waterways. Again, I mean, reiterating the fact that on the drainage permit, and I brought that with me as well, if you have any questions on that, was, there was no indication of clean out of a natural waterway or creating a new surface drain. And so, and at that time, we told that the application fee of $25 for routine maintenance and plus the $500 penalty fee would be applied for the work done without a permit. On November 7th, David Wieland stopped in to file the drainage permit 16 dash 46 for routine maintenance of a natural waterway, paid the $25 fee, penalty fee is pending this decision by the Drainage Board at this public hearing. Continued to question why, or the applicant continued to question why this permit was required. There's no indication that there was any routine maintenance of a natural waterway on that, on that drainage tile permit, which was only valid for installing drainage tile in the field around this Silver Creek area. So staff finds that the continued investigation of the drainage work performed without a permit necessitates resolution of this complaint and finds that the Drainage Board uphold the decision of the Planning Department to charge the penalty fee of $500 for, for the completed work. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay. Is there questions for David at this time? Commissioner Kelly?
Dave, the yellow, the yellow line, the dotted yellow, dotted line, which is existing, is that right?
Yes.
And is that just a natural, like what we're seeing in the picture?
The yellow line, here's part of Silver Creek is the named stream.
The yellow is part of Silver Creek?
Yes.
That was the original waterway, Dick.
Okay. And Silver Creek now goes to the, to the right instead?
So now is, without, without further investigating the property, because we have not obtained access to the property, only from viewing from the state highway right away on Highway 115, and looking that, it's, it's difficult to tell whether or not it's been filled in. Staff, it's important to note that staff has contacted the Army Corps of Engineers and the Department of Environment and Natural Resources about any other regulations that can be applied. Haven't heard any contacts since then about that.
And they were going to clean out the, the yellow. Is that what the permit would have been for?
What they did is install a new channel.
Which is the red?
Right here in red.
Yeah. They just cut a new channel.
Cut a new ditch.
I have a question.
Commissioner Barret?
David, so on the original application for tiling, did they have a diagram of how they wanted to place the tile?
I do have a diagram. I can put that up.
And then I guess, was that tile placed?
Okay, so the tile question, we haven't received anything because our department, we receive tile maps within 180 days after installation. We haven't received anything as far as-
Okay. So, but, so we don't know if the tile was placed. Was notice then asked of the downstream neighbors, et cetera?
Not for drainage tile, for installing new tile.
Okay. I thought that we did require that.
Not if it's outletting into a named stream.
Oh, catch him, right. To a named creek, yeah.
Additional questions?
Thank you.
I'd like to give the person who's appealing this an opportunity to speak. Are you still working on getting that up, Robert?
Yeah.
You want to keep working on that, Robert, or at least?
I'm gonna just hand out the one sheet you got. Of course, I guess you guys can see it.
Yep.
But I, my name is Paul Wieland, and I'm the son of David and Sharon Wieland.
Can you give your address too, please? Your address too, please?
24970475, Del Rapids. And they're the owners. My parents are the owners of this property. Give you a little background on this property. This land was part of the Lowell Running Estate that got sold last December. It was 800 some acres that got sold that day by Chuck Sutton. And we, I worked with Brian Hefty to purchase the southern property, 225 acres. And that was last December. I come in here, this is what, this is what actually happened, which they failed to tell you, but there's nothing on paper. I come into the planning and zoning up here this spring. I said, I wanna, we want to clean out the ditch. We want to make a new ditch. We want to put in tile. We're gonna clean this, tear the trees out, clean the property up. We got the map out, this, this map here that, while you guys, it was up here. You could put that up on the-
The one with the yellow and the red on it?
Correct.
Okay.
I showed David Hoekman, which, who works, I think his first name is David, Mr. Hoekman, who works in planning and zoning. And I showed him what I wanted to do, my dad wanted to do, as far as clean out the waterway, the whole way from, from essentially the Ron Brunzes, or I call it Ron, the bridge that goes across the highway into Baltic, clean this waterway out the whole way, all the way up to our property line with Brian Hefty.
Paul, can I ask a question? Did you use the map that you have in your hand, or did you use the one that Robert just put up on the, that you can see up here? Which map did you?
It ain't that one.
Okay. Is it the map that you have right there in your hand?
Right here.
Okay, why don't you, David, okay, I'll have you pull back to that right now, Robert, for just a second, and we'll look at that one again, now that you know what you're doing. Did you bring this specific map in with you, or with the lines drawn on it or anything?
Yeah, it was a map, you know, it was a map that showed the waterway and, you know, it didn't, I, what I did is I come in here and I showed him what I wanted to do. And I said, I'm gonna, I want to clean out the ditch, and I want to make a new channel. And all he said, he says, you don't need a permit for that because it's a named creek. Because the idea of the ordinance is to get water to a named creek in the first place. That's the idea of the ordinance. And once it gets there, it's out, it's out of the county's hands. I said, okay, that's whatever. If I don't need a permit, I don't need a permit. And I'll remind everybody, this is right by 115, the highway that goes from Baltic- that goes from Baltic to Del Rapids. I mean, this isn't like out in the middle of the section over the hill or something. Everybody can see this. You know what I mean? Hundreds of people drive by, thousands of people drive by that highway every day. And it isn't like we're trying to hide anything or do anything illegal or anything like that. I come in there, I, I asked him if we needed a permit. We did not need a permit. He said, because it's a named creek, I go ahead, get the permit for the tile. We put the tile in. We put some tile in this spring. We got to put more tile in here before it freezes up, hopefully, this fall here yet. And then they, they, uh, we do work and stuff. And I, and I'd like to remind people what happens at a public auction, a land auction. You know, there's a lot of emotion involved, and there's neighbors, you know, that maybe don't get the land that they thought maybe wanted to land. And then they go and, and cause trouble like this here by so-called telling on you or whatever, or, or just causing trouble. Cause this has been a very popular drainage, uh, uh, project here. This, they've had numerous complaints about this here, numerous complaints. You know, secret, the secret police, I call them, you know, telling on neighbors. And so then we, I proceeded with this here. We go in, we get this letter in October, I think it was September or something, we get a letter. And then my dad and I come down here to planning and zoning. Then they tell us about a letter that, uh, Planning and Zoning sent out in, I believe it was first part of August, a stop work order. You know, and that's where all these pictures come from on, uh, of the equipment down there. They never received no stop work order. They sent some letter out, they sent some letter out August, Aug, first part of August. My parents live in Colorado. Their mail gets forwarded to Colorado. And, cause they have an address, they come back and help me plant and harvest. They're out there, they, my, and I, my dad was right there. I said, Dad, did you get a letter? You know, he says, well, we only get no letter. So there's a stop work order, uh, in the first part of August. We didn't, I didn't know nothing about that. And we come down here, then we say, okay, well, now we need a permit. We need a permit for the work we're gonna do. So we proceeded to get a permit here, I think it was end of October. We got a permit. And then this fine, we found out about this fine deal. And I said, well, I'll appeal that, you know. And, and if this, if you guys don't, if you guys don't go along, uh, with getting rid of this $500 fine, then we'll be in circuit court, you know. And, uh, but then we get a permit, we got a permit to do the rest. And right now, you can drive by the property. We cleaned it out from the whole way, all the way up. And, uh, took me about 10 days, but we got the job done. And, uh, so I mean, I don't, I just, this here is just, uh, I don't know, this is very strange. Something, something else is going on here, I think. There's some other authorities involved here evidently on this deal, putting pressure on somebody here at planning and zoning, to what I'd say. But I, I really don't know. But, uh, it's very strange here. This is, uh, cause I went down there and got, and asked him, who said he didn't need a permit, cause it's a, cause it's a named creek. It's just simple as that. I mean, I, I can't, I don't have no proof of that, though. There's nothing on paper here. So, I don't know what, you know, what else to say.
Questions?
Madam Chair, just a comment. You know, uh, if you do tiling and, and the discharge is into a named creek, you don't need to get the, uh, permission of the folks downstream. However, uh, certainly what you wound up doing is, uh, much greater than doing that. And when you straighten out a creek, uh, you're expediting the discharge of water onto, uh, the neighbor's, uh, property, et cetera. And, uh, even if it's a named creek, if, if, uh, if it's flowing slowly below there, it's going to back up and, and flood. And, and certainly that's gotta be consideration. So I think that, uh, you know, told that you were not, that it was not needed, that may have been a miscommunication, uh, because certainly some stuff doesn't need, uh, uh, the, the additional steps. But, uh, you know, we can't, uh, I guess, vouch on what the, uh, postal service did with, with the letter. I don't know. Do we send that kind of a, a message, uh, regular mail, or is it certified or registered, or?
Well, it sent out regular mail, and we didn't receive anything back. So it was, was sent somewhere.
Yeah. Thank you, David.
Commissioner, a follow-up question to that. Were they sent to the same address? Were both letters?
You'll have to come up to the microphone.
Yes, both letters were sent to the same address.
Okay. Additional questions?
I would, I would add that, uh, like your comment there about straightening out, straightening out a creek, uh, the two neighbors, the two neighbors that are downstream, uh, well, this is all part of, you know, this Silver Creek has got all the dams on the Silver Creek watershed. I'm sure you guys are familiar with. And, uh, you know, there's a, I, I have the corridor land right across the road to this, to the east. And there's a dam right a quarter mile to the east of my place. And then there's a dam half a mile down from this, uh, from the Baltic, or from a mile down from the Baltic highway that goes into Baltic. The two neighbors are Ron Brun, Ron Brunz and my aunt. Ron Brunz, he runs, he rented my pasture last year. He's, I mean, it, he's a neighbor. He know, he knew about all this year before it even happened. My aunt, well, it's my aunt. And, uh, you know, and then I went and had to get certified letters from them, and they, they, they had no problem with it. I went and talked to them before I sent the certified letters, cause people don't like getting certified letters. And, uh, so I went and talked to them. I said, I've got no problem with anything you're doing there. And, uh, it's, you know, it's somebody else, obviously, you know, when, it's somebody else or whatever, I don't know. But I would add that, you know, when, when the county, when the commission passes ordinances, you know, they should police the ordinance. You know?
How do you mean different than what they did?
Well, there, there is no policing of this ordinance. The policing of this ordinance is, is, is your, your neighbors, your, your, somebody that's jealous or envious of you telling on you. That's the policing of this ordinance. That's how this ordinance is policed. You know, it's, it's like not having a highway patrolman, and people are speeding up and down the highway, and you rely, rely on other people to call in the license plate and say, that guy's speeding. You, this is, you know, you pass laws without policing the law.
Additional questions?
Nobody's trying to be sneaky here.
Yeah.
This is right by 115. You know what I mean?
Mrs. Bender.
Well, I guess I'm a little bit confused about whether your argument is that you didn't do what you were.
Oh, I, we did it, absolutely.
Okay. And so then it appears to me that you're arguing that.
I got bad advice.
I mean, you're kinda, you're kinda combining two arguments. One, that you feel like people are tattletaling on you, which I don't think is necessarily the issue before us today. And so the second issue is whether you, you did the action, which you're admitting that you did.
Correct.
And whether that action required a permit, which it clearly did, because you pulled a permit on it when you were instructed to do so. And so what you're, what you're complaining about is the penalty, which I believe your, your argument then is, is that you shouldn't be penalized because you received inaccurate instructions from the people you were looking to, to be experts on this issue.
Absolutely. I got bad advice. I went down there and asked if I need a permit. And I showed him exactly where we were gonna do, what we were gonna do. It's a named creek, he said. I remember him saying, it's a named creek, you don't need a permit for that. Simple as that. Then we moved on to the drain tile.
Okay.
Then I'd like to follow up. If that's our issue, then I, I was wondering if Kevin is here and if whether he could come up and speak to that.
Oh, Kevin is here, okay.
That's the issue.
Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. Um, yes, I did, uh, issue the permit for the drain tile. Uh, I cannot recall discussing, uh, anything about the, the creek. Um, that being said, we do lots of drain tile permits, so back in the spring, it's difficult to remember. But I do know that, uh, from my experience in, in telling people, uh, what's needed and not needed, uh, there isn't any drain tile or drainage digging that can be done without a permit. So I don't know, uh, that I would ever say that. Um, it, it, there's very few cases for repair that would not re, need a, a permit, uh, for very short sections of line. And that would be about it, so.
So.
Commissioner Kelly.
When was the permit issued? In October?
The first permit was issued, uh, eight, probably eight.
March.
March.
In March.
At, at a point, you came in and said what you wanted to do, and they said, somebody told you that, uh, you didn't need a permit because it was going into Silver Creek directly.
It was a named creek.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, um, so now, but then you came back and got a permit, is that correct?
Correct.
Which was after the fact, it was late. It's kind of the I'm sorry deal.
I didn't say I'm sorry.
Or oops, or something. But, uh, and so the, what we're talking about today is the $500 fine that was levied for the late permit. Is that pretty much, pretty close to what it is?
It was, it was levied, levied, yeah, the fine was levied because I, I performed work without a proper permit, but I got bad advice initially in March. And, uh, and I, I had, you know, and you guys, you'll, you'll see Brian Hefty in front of you next month, because they're, they got the same issue facing them, because they bought the property right to the north, and they, they did the same thing I did. And, and I, I spoke with Brian. Now, I don't care to bring Brian into this whole s, deal, but I mean, I, I stopped and talked to him after I found out I was gonna get fined $500. And I, it's like, what the hell's going on here, Brian? Cause I know he sat on this drainage board to formulate this, this ordinance. And, uh, he says, well, he says, I never even went down there and asked for a permit. I go, why? He says, well, the way I read it, you don't need a permit for, for a named creek, you know?
Okay, so that.
But I mean, this is all after the fact. That's all, that, you know, this was just a couple of months ago, I talked to him. But I mean, you'll see him next month, cause he's not gonna pay the $500 fine either. So maybe we can consolidate our cases when we go to circuit court.
Okay.
Okay, just a second.
Can I ask?
Yeah, Commissioner Kelly.
Can I ask this? Um, is a permit required even if you're going into a mainstream, main, named stream?
Yes.
And so either he misinterpreted or was mistold that you don't need a permit. What you don't need is.
Paul, just wait, Paul.
What, what you don't need is downstream, downstream, uh, authorization. But you're saying that, and, and th- this is apparently where the argu, where the discussion came up, is that?
No, you just said.
When did you have to have a permit?
Paul, we're talking, just wait.
Downstream, uh, acceptance. I, I'm just a little conf- if, if you were late on the permit, late getting the permit, it's like building something, and then when they find out, where then they say, oh, I gotta get a building permit for that, it's already done. Uh, and I don't know if there's a penalty for that or not, but.
There is.
Uh, this is the same thing. So you go down and get the building permit, even though it was just a little port or something.
Commissioner Kelly, I think what he's disputing through the whole thing is that he was given bad advice at the planning. He came in and specifically asked for a permit. They just told he did not need it. And then later, when he found out he did need it, he bought the permit, and now then they're charging him. So he's just.
So the whole argument is.
The whole argument is this bad, bad advice from the planning department in the first place, or he would've had the permit in the first place for $25. Correct?
Correct.
Yes or no?
Because there was no problems with anybody. Uh, but you did say something there. You said into, you need a permit to go into a named creek. That is correct. But I'm, I'm messing with an, with a named creek. That's the difference here. And that's what I was told. It's a named creek. So you can do, you, you know, you, you have more freedom there. If, I needed a permit to put drain tile when it outlets into a named creek, absolutely.
And you di, and you didn't do that before you got a permit?
I did do that. I, 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 I did do that, cause I was tiled. I tiled. And I got that permit to go into Silver Creek. And, and that job got done in April of, uh, this last, you know, this last spring. And, uh, so, so I mean, it, I just got bad advice upfront, and that's all it is. It's just simple as that. I mean, and, uh, you know, it, uh, nobody's trying to hide anything here, you know?
Okay. We're gonna, we're gonna stop with testimony and see what the commission wants to do with this. So, Mr. Wieland and Kevin, you can sit down unless you've been called back up again.
Madam Chair, I wonder if anyone else here is wanting to speak on this?
Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this? Okay. So Commissioner Bender, excuse me.
I'm curious whether, um, Mr. Katmeyer has any, um, thoughts on this matter. Like he wanted to say something earlier, and I wouldn't give you the opportunity to.
I mean, basically, this comes down to two issues and, and that I saw beforehand, and I think it's been, those have been answered, whether the work was in fact done, and there's admission that that is, and whether it's the type of work that needs a permit. I think there's admission that is. I guess what it, what it comes down to is factually whether you think that, uh, contrary advice was given, and whether that's reasonable to rely on that advice from that office. I mean, I think everybody would agree that's the issue here. So.
Commissioner Burr.
I, I just think I see where, uh, miscommunication could easily happen when you talk about using a named creek. At the same time, I think that when we're rerouting things, that it, uh, it's, it's beyond, uh, what one could expect could be done with, without a permit. You know, if, if I were to redirect the, the Big Sioux River, uh, onto Gerald's property, uh, it, it, it would be impermissible. And, uh, I think, I think we have some miscommunication. I think in this job, I often hear people forget, uh, or, uh, you know, when we have people appealing liens, for example, they were never informed, uh, to their recollection that they were going to have to, uh, to cover those costs. And, uh, they honestly believe they didn't get informed. But then we find the documents where they signed their agreement, et cetera. So I think what we have is miscommunication, and, uh, I can't say, uh, on whose side was, uh, uh, the worst, but we do know that, uh, that the result is not what we would hope.
Commissioner Bennigan.
Uh, David or Kevin, I need some help. When someone comes in to file for a permit, are they given anything in writing on what they are permitted to do and what they can't do? So there's no fuzziness, if you will, to the conversation?
So, to answer your question, on the application, there's a section that lists project description where, and there's checkboxes that indicate whether the drainage permit is for tile or for a ditch. In this case, in this instance, there's a new channel that was created. This is a routine maintenance of natural waterway. You're creating a, a new surface drain, and that was not checked. Drainage tile was checked, so that's, includes everything. So subsurface tile, under the ground, new tile. And they write on there whether it's outletting into Silver Creek on the property, they're installing whatever the sizes of the tile is, non-perforated or perforated tile, and other things like that. So describing the project is an indication they're given two lines to do that.
Do you have that paper with you, David?
I do.
Just pass it around if nothing else. Our handy dandy machine doesn't wanna work. And a copy of that paper is given to the person. Now it's on you guys, if you wanna pass it back.
I have. I've seen that board before.
Turn it around, though. Okay, now move it down a little bit. No, the other way. Sorry.
Right, those boxes there.
So, routine maintenance is not checked, ditch is not checked, tile and, but drainage permit is checked. Outletting on Silver Creek on property. To me, I think it could be confusing. I think it could be confusing because it says outlet in Silver Creek on property, period. And it also says drainage permit, and I see tile, I mean, obviously tile.
It also says main will, I think, tee into existing tile lines. Uh, frankly, I find that confusing also.
I kinda find the whole thing confusing, I.
Di, Paul, just wait. You have to be called on to see if they want any more additional comments, so.
It, it's kind of a who said he, who said who said, who said what. And, and it isn't clear, because the only thing we're talking about is the $500 fine, right? It has nothing to do with anything else that was done here.
Nope.
So if we look at just that, and he was led to believe that didn't need a tile, um, I guess I just kinda lean towards waiving the, the fine, but.
Commissioner Bender, did you have a comment?
Well, I mean, I, I do agree that there's a question of, you know. Well, I mean, I, I do agree that there's a question of, you know, what, what was communicated, and, you know, we have an obligation to uphold our ordinances. And here, it's not clear what was said, but I don't want to leave open the possibility that people can come in and not clearly explain exactly all the actions that they're planning on taking, so that they can avoid complying with ordinances. All that said, given the circumstances and the lack of clarity in this application, I would be in favor of waiving the, the penalty under these circumstances.
Additional comments?
I think we do need to be, I mean, our staff works with this every day, or somebody, a landowner works with it very occasionally. I think we need to be crystal clear. If something isn't clear, I think it's an obligation of the staff to say, what exactly are we doing here?
Additional comments or a motion?
I'll make a motion to waive the penalty.
I'll second it.
Additional comments?
I'm not in favor of that.
We'll do a roll call, Paul. Any more comments, Commissioner Bennigan?
One of the things that I think would be very helpful, and this certainly could be used as a learning process, is to sit down with not only the applicant, but regardless of the discussion and the vote, is, I guess, attaching or putting something with this application that shows exactly what they're going to do, and how they're gonna do it, and what they're gonna do, would be very helpful. And if it has to be color-coded or whatever, so there's no question about, frankly, what the process is and what the ordinance says that needs to be done.
Madam Chair, I agree with Gerald there, and it seems to me that I've seen the diagrams showing parallel lines, you know, going to a main channel, and so that's what this is? Those parallel lines there are what was originally shown?
Sale drawing.
It says sale drawing.
We have a motion in a second on the table.
I agree with Gerald, I agree with Gerald too, though, that, that I think the staff has to be, they deal with it every day, they know what they need, and they have to be clear and helpful to having somebody come in and, especially if you've never done this, and they go in and what do you want, you know, cause, cause in South Dakota, we're tended to do handshakes and, and trust people's word. If it's not clear, I think it's our obligation to make sure that it's clear to everybody, and with the professionals that work with us every day, so.
We do have a motion in a second on the table to waive the five hundred dollar fee. Roll call, Paul, please.
Bye.
Nate.
Bender?
Yes.
Bennigan?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Hi, Berger.
Yes, motion passes four to one. With that, we'll go on to item number twelve. Consider a motion to authorize the purchase of one two thousand seventeen Dodge Ram fifty-five hundred by Emergency Management for forty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars from contract number sixteen nine nine four, competitive bid, and awarded by the state of South Dakota.
Commissioners, Lynn Deong, Emergency Management, included within the seventeen budget, is fifty-seven thousand dollars for the purchase of a chassis to be used by Emergency Management. Attached to the memo is the competitive bid by the state of South Dakota, contract number one six nine nine four. In doing research, we looked at both the Minnesota State bid, South Dakota State bid, and also investigated, which isn't in the memo, but the Iowa State bid. The vehicle that suits our needs comes from the South Dakota State bid in the amount of forty-seven nine ninety, and I'm requesting authorization to enter into the contract for the delivery of this vehicle.
Is there any questions for Lynn? This was a budgeted item.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Lynn. Item number thirteen is authorize the chairman to sign two thousand seventeen joint security protection agreement between the Department of Military and Minnehaha County to provide security services for the one-fourteenth fighter wing of the South Dakota Air National Guard. Keith Winnie, good morning, Keith.
Commissioner, Keith Winnie, Air Guard Division Supervisor. We're seeking the approval for the two thousand seventeen agreement.
Keith, could you pull the microphone up just a little bit more? Thank you.
You bet, hear me all right? This agreement has the initial funding of six hundred and thirty-two thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-three cents. Through the government funding process, the remaining hundred and eighty-seven thousand needed to cover the cost of our operations will arrive later in the fourth quarter of the fiscal year, typically between July and September. This delay in toll payment will not affect the monthly expenses of the county throughout the extent of, extent of the contract, so it's the same, same deal we had last year.
Okay. Any questions for Keith on this? Is there a motion?
Move, excuse me, move for approval, second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously, thanks, Keith. Item number fourteen is authorize the chair to sign the two thousand seventeen lease agreement between Minnehaha County and the Sioux Valley Geological Society and the Minnehaha County Historical Society for the office space at the Old Courthouse Museum. A unanimous vote is required on this particular issue. Good morning, Bill.
Good morning, Commissioners, Bill Hoskins, Director of the Sioux Land Heritage Museums. We have before you two lease agreements. One is for the Sioux Valley Genealogical Society, who leases two small spaces on the second floor of the Old Courthouse Museum. The other is for the Minnehaha County Historical Society, who leases a small space on the first floor of the Old Courthouse Museum. Leases also include the provision of free meeting space for those organizations for their monthly meetings, and this has been a longstanding relationship with both of these. I believe we began formal leases with the organizations in the year two thousand, and they were occupying space in the museum more than thirty years ago, so. Are, are there any questions?
Any questions? Or is it look for a motion?
I'll make that motion. Second.
A second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously, thanks, Bill.
Thank you very much.
Item number fifteen is liaison reports. And there are none. Item number sixteen is new business. Item number seventeen is old business. Look for a motion to adjourn into executive session for legal briefing, contacts, and personnel.
That's my motion.
Second.
A second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously, we are.